Boy Scouts who are in attendance with us tonight, either working on communications or they're citizens in the community badges. Nick and Andrew Sims are in the back of the room. They're out of Troop 266, which is out of Dunwoody Methodist. And Riley Ken again is out of Troop 477, which is out of Kingswood Methodist. And we appreciate all the good work and valued work that our Scouts do for our community, and so always like to recognize them. Wednesday is the Dunwoody Farmers Market, which is in the shops of Dunwoody, in the back across from the car wash. And Food Truck Thursday is Thursday night at Brookfront Park. And it's been a lot of fun and a huge success. I mean, each week, I think there are actually more people, and I encourage everyone to come. Thank you.
As we were conducting our last council meeting on July 8th, one of our officers, Chris Irwin, had just completed his tour of duty and was headed home. He heard a medical emergency call and opted to respond nonetheless. Even though the call location was next to the DeKalb Fire and Rescue Station, Officer Irwin arrived first and used his AED equipment and training to resuscitate the victim. This became the city's third survival instance with the police department's AED equipment and training that goes with it. As a message to every business, company, or nonprofit group who contributed to the purchase of these AEDs, please know that your donation made this survival possible. I thank Officer Irwin for his actions. It speaks volumes about his commitment to Dunwoody public safety and that of fellow man. But I'd already seen that commitment through one of my ride-alongs with him. It also speaks volumes about the need for a rapid arrival on scene, something that we'll hear more about when we further discuss fire and rescue services in the future, at any time in the future. It serves as a reminder about the value of Dunwoody having a take-home police car policy. Without that policy, that victim may not be alive today, as the officer would have been without his life-saving equipment and truthfully may not have known about the call at all. I also hope this incident serves as a call to action to every building owner, every business owner, in every church in Dunwoody, and other large gathering places, any of those locations that do not have an AED unit installed on their premises. These units are modestly priced to purchase, but provide a priceless benefit. The units are self-explanatory to use and will not allow a person to take the wrong action. In fact, I would argue the wrong action is to not invest in these devices for your buildings, businesses, or churches. We're blessed by the presence of Officer Chris Irwin and the other fine officers of the Dunwoody PD. Thank you to all of them.
Thank you. Nice sentiment. Thank you. As Doug would say, it's a great day in Dunwoody. We're paving streets and building sidewalks, so all is good here in Dunwoody. All right, I'd like to approve or make some changes to the meeting agenda. Lynn, you had some moves?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove from the consent agenda I-3 and make it L-3. And I would like to add to the consent agenda M-2 and make it, I have no idea. Would that be I-6?
I-5.
Five? Hmm. That's five.
Six. I-6.
I-6. I-5.
The new I-5?
The new I-5.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All aye.
All against, say nay. All right. Let's move on to, um...
I need to approve the...
Okay. Approve it will be... I want to do the thing. I'll do that first, okay. All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, motion. Let's move to second it. We have vote.
Well, you're not voting on the consent, are you? Voting on the changing the agenda, approving the agenda?
Correct.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I move. John seconded.
We're all set.
Now we vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as for finalizing the agenda.
Right.
Now, public comment. All right, at this point, we'll move on to public comment. We have a total of 30 minutes for public comment, three minutes per citizen. And your name and address, and remember, this is not a two-way conversation. This is a public comment, so we will start off with Mr. Jay Pryor. Again, three minutes, Mr. Pryor. Thank you.
Good evening. Two weeks ago, Barbara and I went to our first Food Truck Thursday, and as was stated earlier, it really was fun. It was a lot of fun until the time we were leaving. As we went with our daughter and our two grandsons, and my grandson's is three years old, he was holding my hand as we were approaching the street, that main street that comes in Brookfront Park. And yes, there was a car coming, and so I had the grandson's hand, and he wanted to hold his mother's hand. Well, he got away from me, but instead of going and getting her hand, he started going out into the street. And she yelled, she grabbed for him, grabbed him by his hair. He was screaming. It was not a pleasant sight. It could have been very, it was a very dangerous situation. And the reason I tell you this is here's where we were going to cross the street, and over here is the on-duty Dunwoody police officer, and sitting in his patrol car. I'm just asking Chief Grogan to give instructions to the police officers to help people get across that street, rather than being sitting there in the police car. Tonight, you're going to consider making it legal to be under the influence of alcohol on park property at events sponsored by the city. The ordinance under consideration begins with the statement, "The mayor and city council of the city of Dunwoody are charged with preserving the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city." Here's a rhetorical question. Let's say you have two groups of people with about 200 people in each group, something like Food Truck Thursday. One group is legally sanctioned to consume alcohol, and no alcohol is allowed for the second group. From which of the two groups would you expect more trouble? The group consuming alcohol or the other group? What do you think Chief Grogan would advise? What's the benefit of passing the ordinance? I really don't understand. Does it take alcohol for the people of Dunwoody to enjoy Food Truck Thursday? It's already been stated how successful it has been without alcohol. Just because Sandy Springs does something, does that make it right for Dunwoody? We're talking about sanctioning alcohol at a event that could not be any closer to the children's playground. In fact, the direct path from the food trucks to the band is through the playground. Without question, the potential downside in terms of danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city far outweighs any benefit. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Pryor. Next name up is Bobby Sedan.
I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Okay. Next name up is Barbara Pryor.
Good evening. Barbara Pryor, concerned citizen and grandma, 4735 Cambridge Drive. As Lynn said, Food Truck Thursday has been a great success. It has been promoted by the city as a family event and even takes place where the trucks park between the children's playground and the skate park, with families eating on the grounds of the children's playground, sitting at tables, on play equipment, on walls, on the grass, in front of the band. Now, the city is considering an ordinance amending Chapter 25 Parks and Recreation, Article 2, so that, quote, "Any person may possess, use, consume, or be under the influence of any alcoholic beverage at a special event sponsored or co-sponsored by the city of Dunwoody," end quote. According to Illinois pattern jury instructions, quote, "A person is under the influence of alcohol when as a result of drinking any amount of alcohol, his mental or physical faculties are so impaired as to reduce his ability to think and act with ordinary care," end quote. The Carl Vinson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia State says, quote, "In the 1980s, public concern about accidents and fatalities caused by drunk driving increased. As a result, Georgia, like other states, toughened its DUI laws. The legal drinking age was increased from 18 to 21. Local laws were passed banning happy hours or prohibiting open containers of alcoholic drinks on public streets. Lawsuit decisions made private hosts and bartenders responsible for accidents caused by persons who were unfit to drive when they left the host home or a bar." The ordinance amendment opens with, "Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Dunwoody are charged with preserving the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city, it is unconscionable to encourage and allow people to, quote, 'consume any alcoholic beverage,' or, quote, 'be under the influence of any alcoholic beverage during these family events.' These events take place in a park just across the street from two churches and the middle school and adjacent to an alcoholic treatment center. It seems imperative to consider Chapter 4, Article 4, Section 4-99 of the same ordinance where distances to these certain establishments are dictated. Beyond setting a good example for our young people when binge drinking is a life-threatening problem at our colleges and universities, there is a matter of safety in our parks. Right now, at Brookfront Park, the close proximity of parking cars entering and exiting the park, many exceeding the 15 mile per hour limit, creates a very dangerous situations with parents trying to keep up with their little ones while loading others in their car seats. Imagine the increased danger with people, not only drivers, but parents, under the influence of any alcoholic beverage." Is this still working?
Yes.
And, thank you. And even if other cities may have alcohol in their parks, remember what your mother told you, just because someone else does it doesn't make it right. Having a good time does not necessitate an alcoholic beverage. Having a good time is simply a family affair.
Thank you, Ms. Pryor. Next name up is Jim Riddisher. Again, three minutes, Mr. Riddisher, and name and address.
My name is...
Yes, forget it.
My name is Jim Wright Teicher, 5276 Trobridge Drive, Dunwoody Club Forest. It's my pleasure this evening to announce three candidates for the 2013 Dunwoody City Council election. I will run for District 2. I've been a Dunwoody resident for 30 years. I'm Senior Project Manager at Corus 360, a technology consulting and solutions company. I'm a graduate of Georgia Tech with a Master of Science in Engineering. For District 1, Henley Shelton, a 28-year Dunwoody resident. Henley, please stand and be recognized. Henley is Managing Director for HD Management International, has an MBA from Georgia State, and is a graduate of the Harvard Business School Advanced Management Program. He served with the United States Marine Corps in Vietnam, received the Purple Heart and the Navy Commendation Medal with Combat V. For District 3, Sam Eads, a 17-year Dunwoody resident. Sam, please stand and be recognized. Sam is the co-owner of Tech Savvy Leeds, an internet marketing company, and he does computer consulting for private industry and government. He is a BS in Information and Computer Science from Georgia Tech. We call ourselves the Clean Sweep Candidates, a slate of candidates dedicated to basic and practical improvements and common sense solutions favored by the majority of Dunwoody residents. Many of you probably remember us from the Dunwoody Fourth of July Parade with signs that read, "Clap if you want your roads repaid." We are independent businessmen with a unique set of management and business skills. We are nonpartisan candidates, and we are not members of or beholden to any organization or government agency. Our objective is to listen to and provide a voice for Dunwoody citizens. We intend to restore trust and confidence in Dunwoody city government. This statement and press release of our backgrounds and objectives are available for the press and will also be seen on our websites. We've requested a two-week quiet period in order to finalize the details of our positions. We have no illusions. Our opponents will have all the big money and support of the group that has been in power and their friends. Our goal is different. We seek the support of average Dunwoody citizens to represent their interests and desires and thereby fulfill their vision for the future of Dunwoody. Our message to the Dunwoody voters is very simple. Help is on the way. Please help us help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddisher. Next name up is Sam Eads.
I'll pass.
Okay. All right, we've already done the consent agenda, right?
No.
All right.
Get the vote on.
Now, we already have that already changed.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to make changes to that?
You have a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Take that, thanks. All right, first item up on unfinished business is L-1, approval of the contract award for the RFP for Public Safety Video Surveillance Project. Chief, are you doing that? Is he here?
Deputy Chief is doing it.
Deputy Chief is doing it, okay.
We've completed the RFP process. We negotiated a final vendor, and we recommend the council approve and last to make progress in the process.
I have just a couple of questions about the process. There were three, there were three companies that bid, but there was clearly a difference. The range of prices is huge, but on top of that, I'm curious if the other two companies, well, one was, their price was way higher, but the systems alert security, was their application simply not complete? Do you know?
Of the ones that we were seeing, one was as close to being non-responsive as it could possibly be.
Still turns up in them?
Didn't meet any of the criteria.
Okay. Is this an industry where there are lots of companies or not? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yes, and security cameras have been around for a long time. We can see DOT cameras everywhere. Schools have them, businesses have them. The advantage of this particular company is their ability to work with a variety of different manufacturers and vendors for communication across different sales lines that they work. We really thank them based upon their experience and their proposal to their investors.
And then, there was just a piece this week, or I guess last week, because today's Monday, on the news over the weekend about how many school systems have cameras that actually aren't working. It was like in one system, it was 25%. Will we have a maintenance plan either that we will do, or will the company be responsible for making sure their cameras are in working order?
There is a maintenance agreement, annual fee that's associated with this. Those parts of the agreement, which we are individually responsible for, pilot and something like that, we're responsible for that. There will be a term of life on the equipment. We'll have to obviously monitor and negotiate for that as it comes up.
And one final question. For the monitoring of the cameras, will that be, that will be done here? Where we'll see the films, or where you'll see the films, not me?
You can do it two different ways. You can do it live.
Okay.
We have staff to do it in all functions we do not.
Right.
The best purpose for this camera system is to provide this evidentiary value after the fact and provide a safety net for the use of our parks. We hope that with the wireless capabilities of this, it'll become a great tool for officers who are not physically present, but can still check parks for safety issues.
And they'll be able to check in their cars, or, yes?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
May I?
DC, when this first came up, we thought we were piggybacking on an existing contract with another jurisdiction, and then this went into a bid. Seems like the number on this is higher than what that original piggyback thought was. Did the scope of the purchase change in that interim time, or was it because the piggyback had a bigger discount than what us bidding on our own would have done?
I think there are three parts to that. One is time. Obviously, as time goes by, costs go up, and we're not able to piggyback in manufacturing and this, because companies look at this as an individual sales to us as opposed to just something we can piggyback off someone else. We did receive a substantial discount, the original estimate that we received, and we have a discount this time. It's just that the cost difference is not quite the same.
DC, you, I saw on here also, we had license plate readers. You have those, what, at both entrances?
Yes, sir. They'll be in two different locations. They will be able to record access points to and from the park. If we set them up one place and they don't work as well, we'll have to move.
Okay. Can you explain how that works? Is, I assume, a license plate, a stolen car, or something like that, makes the system alarm go off?
It depends.
Do we have an officer in the area that then takes care of it, or is it something? You know, what do you anticipate that doing?
This is the same company in which we're using now for our license plate readers. It actually will give you a tunnel alert if a wanted vehicle or stolen vehicle or a vehicle associated with missing person or any other entry is found to be in a park, and we can dispatch based upon that tunnel alert, staff availability.
Okay, and I know a few of us went to Midtown Alliance last year and saw Midtown Blue, and they use the same system as this, as I recall. Wasn't it the same?
Same Springs.
And Sandy Springs does too, and I think Atlantic Station does too. And Midtown Blue is able to show us, they were able to tap into the Atlantic Station system, and I think Sandy Springs also. They couldn't control their cameras, but they could at least tap in. Are we going to be part of that now? Will we be tapped into this? Will we have access to theirs, and then us?
Initially, we will not. Initially, we'll only have access to that which we hosted on. We can reach an agreement with Sandy Springs or others who participate in the same similar type program in shared data, but that's a really complex process. It requires a lot of legal issues to be addressed in each case. Sandy Springs will probably be our first host agreement. We're next door to them. It just makes sense.
Okay. Now, these are movable cameras? We can...
They're fixed.
They're are fixed, okay. All right. Anybody else? Well, this is a voting item, as I recall, right, Sharon?
It is.
Okay. Have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against, say nay.
I was yes.
It was unanimous. All right, and we're going to move on to L-2. Warren, you're on on this. Is the ordinance to amend the possession, use, or consumption of alcoholic beverages?
An ordinance amending Chapter 25 Parks and Recreation, Article 2, Use of Recreational Facilities to revise prohibition concerning alcoholic beverages on park property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What you have before you tonight is an ordinance that would amend the alcohol code. It would allow for the consumption of alcohol in recreational facilities, which means any parks properties that we have in the city limits. Currently, by permit, folks are allowed to sell alcohol by a licensed distributor and who has a pouring license in the city of Dunwoody. What this would allow for is at special events that are sponsored or co-sponsored by the city, that folks would be allowed to bring their own alcohol into the parks. It would not preempt any laws that we have on public drunkenness, DUI, or other alcohol offenses within the criminal code. Be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Warren, at our six o'clock meeting, I had raised the issue of why are we adding "under the influence of any alcoholic beverage" to an allowance in this code? And could you explain to me, does this need to be there for this ordinance to work?
I'll defer that to our city judge. I think what this is saying is, when you look at "under the influence" in the context of this ordinance, it's not being used as a term of art like it is in the criminal law. This is to say that you can drink alcohol and, within the confines of the law, be under the influence of alcohol. This ordinance would not preempt public drunkenness, would not preempt any of the drunken disorderly, or frankly, even our other ordinances, city ordinances regarding the consumption of alcohol. So, I would leave it in here, and I do not believe it preempts anything and causes a problem. And I think that the reason we're hanging on this language is, in the criminal law, in the criminal context, that is a, it is a term of art that applies to a, you have crossed a certain legal limit, and then when you cross that legal limit, you are under the influence, which is used as a term of art there. It is not being used as that term of art here.
But I see it as a conflict, term of art or otherwise, that we have ordinances on the books against public drunkenness, yet this would allow it at city events. Would this, Cecil, would this ordinance work if we took that out completely, that "under the influence of any alcoholic beverage"? Would the ordinance, as we're submitting it here today, would it work without those terms?
I would not take it out of there. I will tell you that. I would not take it out of there because there is a, there is an area in there where you may be drinking and have some effect. It is not a legal, you have not crossed any sort of a legal, criminal limit on it. Frankly, this is our historical language in this ordinance, and I would not be inclined to take it out. I can tell you that.
Well, I can tell you that I typically go along with advice of legal counsel. I just believe that this ordinance is being put forward, correct me if I'm wrong, but in order to allow a family to bring a bunch of kids and have three waters, three Diet Cokes, two beers, and a cooler to serve, I'm not sure it allows public drunkenness. I don't want public drunkenness allowed. And actually, let me flip that back, because unless it's at a permitted event, or a special event, or a city-sponsored event, this does serve as your prohibition of alcohol in the parks. So if you took it out of here, really, the argument would be, well, yeah, it's not illegal for me to possess, use, or consume it in the park, but I am beyond the influence because y'all took that out of here, which means I could drink outside the park and come to the park, which is, I think, why this language was originally here, to say, you might not have possessed, consumed, or drank it here, but don't come if you've been drinking it and come here. That's still operative language until you have a permit. So I think if you took it out, you may open up a wider hole for non-permitted times in your parks. Actually, you'd open up a huge hole.
I don't believe this ordinance is ready for prime time. I'm going to be voting against it without that amendment to be taken out. I am happy to put forward an amendment to remove the words "under the influence of any alcoholic beverage." I'd be happy to entertain that if anybody wants to nod and say that we'd go along with that. Other than that, I'm voting no.
I have a couple of questions. I think I'm just getting myself more confused. And this is something, so today, if some, the city sponsors an event in the park, the cosponsor, if we cosponsor an event, the cosponsor can get a permit to sell alcohol?
Yes.
So like, if we had an event called July 4th Day at the park, they could, and somebody was cosponsoring with us, they could pull a permit and sell beer?
Yeah, as long as the person selling the beer is licensed.
In Dunwoody?
In Dunwoody.
Okay. But people still couldn't, they couldn't bring their own into the park?
Correct.
Okay. So that's my first.
DHA could do it at Food Truck Thursday.
Right, DHA could do it at Food Truck Thursday, and people still couldn't bring it in. And so, when this was discussed, just in the interest of disclosure to the audience, when this was discussed a few weeks ago, I didn't really think there was anything wrong with it. And the issue is, is that people are doing it anyway, because people don't even necessarily know that it's against the rules. And so, but I'm sort of with John on this. I'm not quite sure, given the fact that we could have licensed servers if the sponsors decided to, I'm not sure that this is a change that we need to rush to do. Also, the fact that there are easily 800 people, I think, at Food Truck Thursdays speaks that maybe this isn't a change that we need to rush through either. So, that's just where I am at this moment.
Just to let my colleagues know where I am, we had a very extended discussion... So like, if we had an event called July Fourth Day at the park, they could, and some, somebody was cosponsoring with us, they could pull a permit and sell beer?
Yeah, as long as the person selling the beer is licensed.
In Dunwoody.
In Dunwoody.
Okay. But people still couldn't, they couldn't bring their own into the park?
Correct.
Okay. So that's my first.
DHA could do it at Food Truck Thursday.
Right, DHA could do it at Food Truck Thursday, and people still couldn't bring it in. And so, when this was discussed, just in the interest of disclosure to the audience, when this was discussed a few weeks ago, I didn't really think there was anything wrong with it. And the issue is, is that people are doing it anyway, because people don't even necessarily know that it's against the rules. And so, but I'm sort of with John on this. I'm not quite sure, given the fact that we could have licensed servers if the sponsors decided to, I'm not sure that this is a change that we need to rush to do. Also, the fact that there are easily 800 people, I think, at Food Truck Thursdays speaks that maybe this isn't a change that we need to rush through either. So that's just where I am at this moment.
Just to let my colleagues know where I am, we had a very extended discussion at the six o'clock meeting, and the way it's written now, and I realize council did, city attorney did provide some language that would alleviate this, but any alcoholic beverage would include hard liquor and any number of things. And the discussion, I mean, the intent of this, I think, I believe Denny was the one that originally supported this, was to have beer and wine permitted at Food Truck Thursday. But after that discussion at six o'clock, trying to modify it for that opens up too many can of worms, which I won't have to repeat here. For that reason, I'm going to vote against it as well. I think it's, it would make it overly complicated to try to accommodate that, and it's just not where we need to be.
All right. This is, this is interesting. I, you know, my, my issue is, first of all, that, as you said, 800 people come in, and I guarantee you, there's 250 coolers there, and the majority have, have most likely pure wine in them. Right now, our system is a don't ask, don't tell system, so that we have all of our citizens basically sneaking it in and using it. And, you know, what you end up with is, the city looks the other way, our police officers look the other way, and we end up with a situation that, I guess the only real way to solve this, if the Food Truck Thursday people want to have beer and wine, is to sell it then, because they can get that permit tomorrow, right?
Right.
So I, I'm willing to go along with you. I don't like the wording enough on this, but the reality is that, you know, we're not solving the problem, we're just kind of kicking it down the road.
Well, and I think that there's value in being responsive, but I think you have to be careful and do it correctly. And I think there was a sense that we sort of had this artificial timeline to get this done now-ish, because it was, the event was going on now. But I'm with you about the language. I don't think the language is great.
All right. Was this a voting item?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I get the feeling it's not going well. So, do I have a motion?
That's a tricky thing, isn't it?
It is.
It fails.
Fails for even a motion.
Right.
There you go. All right. Let's move on to M1.
L3.
I'm sorry, L3. You didn't, you knew L3, didn't you?
Trees Atlanta.
Yes. Approval of the contract award for Trees Atlanta and the agreement for tree plantings within the city parks. And Brett, you're up, right?
Evening, Mayor and Council. As the Mayor said, we have the contract award for Trees Atlanta for the 300 trees for $60,000 with a...
You got to step off and step on it again or something.
Get down into it.
How's that?
Better.
It was, it was good. All right. So, again, we've got the contract award for Trees Atlanta for replacing trees within the city parks. We solicited this out to seven different vendors. We had six not respond, one called us and said, no, thank you, and Trees Atlanta submitted their quote. So staff builds that it is a very agreeable contract. We think it's a great price for what they want to offer us, and it's also made up volunteer service. So we plan to do that on September 28th, on this part of the volunteer Dunwoody Day out in the park. So I'll answer any questions you have.
I do. I'm just having, I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of...
Put your microphone.
I will. Just having some microphones. Okay. Brett, I have a few questions. And they are not, they are as followed. One is that I remain concerned that we only got one bid. And with all the, whatever, nurseries, and with all the people that sell trees in the metro, greater metro area, and perhaps North Georgia, it bothers me a little bit. And I don't know if there, if you think there was something, I mean, obviously, you know, one told you no, six just didn't respond. And it bothers me in part, because if I were to call Trees Atlanta to buy a tree, it would be half the price, it'd be $100, but without them watering and stuff. So I understand that's built in. But I'm curious if you can identify why it is that you think we only got one bid?
Well, the, the scope of work was more than just purchasing the trees.
Right.
As you said, it was the maintenance plan and all that. I think the number of trees, you know, there's a lot of trees for us to get at one time from one vendor. I think having that two-year maintenance plan and the scope of work, all those things, would make it difficult for a private sector vendor possibly to keep up with. Trees Atlanta, this is what they do. You know, this is, their sole focus is to plant trees in metro parks. So that's why I feel that they, yeah, I would, that's been...
I would add to that, too, not only the purchase of that many trees at once, but the labor involved in putting them in, is that worth, say, that takes 10 days to put it all in, that's 10 days you're not serving another client.
Gotcha.
So just, I mean, again, I don't have any inside information, just trying my own logic on why it would be difficult to get a lot of companies interested in this type of work that we're doing.
Okay. And then, when, so is the end of September the right time of year to plant trees?
October's preferable.
Okay.
But we're, we've got Volunteer Day, September 28th. We'll have 1,000 volunteers, and it's a great project for them to do. So it's a little bit early, but not to the point where it's detrimental.
And do these trees come with warranties?
Yes. Well, the, part of the maintenance plan, too, is the pruning and upkeep and all that. So if one were to die, we could go back to them and say, hey, you know, this is...
What if, like, ten die? I mean, is it like, when you buy plants from home?
There's going to be some attrition.
Right.
And you're going to have that as part of it. And that's certainly something we could talk to Trees Atlanta about to see if there's a rep, ah, I'm sorry, replacement policy with their trees.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like an answer to that. And then, the, there was just one thing I noticed, is that you're saying replant in the parks and on, which, in Dunwoody Parks, which is, but in the agreement, their quote, it says to plant them in Brook Run.
Right. And that, that was just a mistake in their quote that they sent us. It is for all city parks per our tree policy.
Right.
Tree replacement policy. And before we enter into a contract with them, we would make sure that language cleared up, to say all Dunwoody Parks. We are going to focus on Brook Run, but of course, if, in their planning, if we feel that there's an opportunity to put it some in other parks, we would.
Okay. And my last question is, is that in, I believe that in the scope of work for the path, there was some re-vegetation or re, you know, we were going to plant there. Is this different from that?
Yes. The re-vegetation or landscape plan in the, in the trail building, or construction of the trail, was for ground cover, for grass and mulch, things like that. But there were no trees in that landscape plan.
Okay. And then, the last question, I swear, is the volunteers, when, when they're, when, is Trees Atlanta going to supervise?
Absolutely. They'll bore the holes, have everything ready, and then have tree experts there to help the volunteers place them and cover them and watch them properly.
All right. Thank you.
John?
I was going to ask the same question regarding Brook Run versus the other parks, because I also saw the discrepancy. In the sense of boring the holes, will you have a layout of where those holes will be prior to?
Yes. Part of their scope is to work with city staff to come up with a tree planting plan. So we'll, we'll know what tree species is going to what hole and what part of which park.
Okay. We touched about this at the last meeting, but there are no quotes for fruit trees. Brook Run Park has what's considered an orchard, possible fruit tree location. Is there any possibility at all that Trees Atlanta could give a 5% fruit tree of the total 300? Could 10 trees, fruit trees, be added to our orchard? Is that even a possibility?
Absolutely. As long as we plant it within the orchard area, I wouldn't recommend we put fruit trees outside of that area. But certainly, working with them, we could, we could identify some trees for the orchard.
I would love to have you actually specifically talk about the orchard and the possibility of fruit trees, of Trees Atlanta, if that's something they can do, even if it's outside their norm for the price at which we're paying, which seems to be above a little bit of the normal price. I'd love to have that as part of the discussion with you and Trees Atlanta. Thank you.
Anything else?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against?
Me.
Were you against that?
Yes.
Lynn was against, you got that.
Thanks.
All right. Move on to M1, Resolution for 90-Day Moratorium on Rezoning and Special Land Use Permit Applications. Mr. Hopper.
A resolution imposing on the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, a moratorium of 90 days unless it is terminated upon applications for issuance of rezonings and special land use permits in the city of Dunwoody in order to allow for the consideration, review, and adoption of provisions to set provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What you have before you is a recommendation from staff to impose a moratorium on rezoning applications and special land use permit applications for a 90-day period. That moratorium, and either at the end of the 90-day period, or when council adopts the zoning ordinance in the final. On your schedule for now, we have, we have special work sessions scheduled for the city council. The issue's been through the community council and the planning commission. It's now into the purview of the council. So August 5th and August 6th, there are some dates where the council will be reviewing carefully. And the estimation is if, if we're able to gain consensus, that it's likely that we'd have an August vote at your second meeting in August. And obviously, that can be deferred and delayed to make sure that we have the right ordinance in place that y'all are approving. So the, we've been working on the ordinance for 18 months, and I think we have such a level of specificity now, that in discussions that we've had with certain developers, folks in the development community are starting to look at the old ordinance versus the new one and make a decision on which would be more advantageous for them to apply under. And that's really the impetus, it's the, the volume of activity that we have, especially in the perimeter center area. And I think it would be in the best interest of the city to see that developments that occur that are 30- and 50-year investments into the community will follow under the rules that we're setting under our new zoning ordinance, which is the logical result of all of the comprehensive planning we've done, not only in our master plan areas, but also the perimeter center area as well. So our staff's recommendation is to go ahead with a short-term moratorium of 90 days, and it would be rescinded, again, upon 90 days or upon the city council passing a zoning ordinance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that John may have.
I think this is a necessary thing, so that we can not have a lot of inconsistencies moving forward. I'm, I want to make sure I understand something and that the public understands. If, if I own a piece of property and it's zoned C1 today, and the zoning rewrite changes it, I still keep the zoning of C1?
You keep C1, but the underlying zoning and rules may change.
For C1, for what is C1?
For whatever C1 is, yes. So, for example, if there was a setback of 50 feet under the C1, and you held on that property, and the property then, the new ordinance says now the setback is 30 feet. 30 feet is what carries the debt.
Okay. So...
That's great. But anything that someone currently has in place would become illegal, non-conforming use. So until they abandon that use, they would be able to maintain their property.
Yeah, I'm talking about future applications for, for development.
So my question about future applications for development, and maybe this is out of order, and I'm sorry if it is, but my future about, so, so if I own a piece of property and it's zoned C1, C1 today, and for whatever reason, the zoning rewrite changes it to R35?
Well, now, what the zoning rewrite's going to do is, is basically deals with the definitions, rules, standards within those zoning districts. So if you own a piece of property that's C1, nothing within the changes that y'all are making, change the zoning of a particular property, just the underlying rules and regs.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm done.
Great. It sounded like there's no particular incident or just a concern in general that you're worried about as far as having this moratorium, because we didn't have this before us prior to today. We had the discussion at 6:00 and voting at 7:00. So we didn't, we didn't tip our hand, if you will, in, in, prior to now. So just confirming, there is no, nothing on the table that's being considered by a developer that we're trying to work around, it's just...
As far as I know, there are no imminent applications coming forward, but there's certainly lots of projects that we're in discussions with developers in various stages.
Okay. And then, Cecil, a question for you. You know, moratoriums, and I mentioned this at 6:00, can be tricky sometimes, and when you get into the zoning and property rights issue, you know, sometimes we can see unintended consequences. Do you see any issues with this? Are we following correct procedure with this? Is this a standard procedure? Is this, do you see any unintended consequences that might come from this through the way of litigation or other claims that may be out there if we adopt this moratorium?
I do not. You have a, you know, in adopting moratorium, the primary issues are, one, do you have a sound reason based upon health, safety, and welfare to adopt it? And the imminent change of your zoning code, a wholesale change, would be a pretty reasonable basis on which to say, you know, we're about to make a huge policy change, let's hold everything off until we get through that policy change. The second area of analysis is to look to the scope of what you, the moratorium is, to make sure that based upon the concern, it's narrowly tailored to address those issues. This addresses two categories of applications, use permits and rezonings, and the other areas, the length of time. And 90 days has generally been held to be an appropriate time for a moratorium under Georgia law. So I don't see any issues on this, and I would frankly be surprised to see anyone challenge this. I'm not sure it would be a fruitful challenge. I think, too, I would just add that what you're doing here in dealing with rezonings and special land use permits is you're not denying them anything, you're delaying. So, so really, the only loss that they would incur is just the time associated with it. And I think that's where the 90 days comes to, because it's such a short period of time that really, commercially, it'd be a taking.
Okay. And, and related to that, just to confirm, this has no impact on building permits?
That's correct.
The issuance of that, because I don't want to do anything?
Yeah, and I'll stay publicly for the council and for the public, it has no impact on building permits, variances, or other applications? Is this solely limited to rezoning of existing property and special land use permits or petitions, which is typically associated with a rezoning?
Anything, John?
No. Everything's passed, sir.
All right. No more discussion? Any, any motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Anything left? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against, say nay? Okay, good. Thank you. Move on to M3, A Resolution to Establish Fees for Life Safety Review and Inspection. Sharon, did you read something there?
A resolution adopting and approving these schedules for life safety inspections of the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what you have before you tonight is a creative proposal to change and improve the efficiency in our building permit review and inspection process. And what we're suggesting is to, let me back up for a second from a background standpoint. The way that the permit process currently works for both commercial and residential permits is that you need to, to have plan review done both on the city's building code, which is a state-adopted code, and the state-adopted life safety code. The way the process works, because the life safety code is typically the purview of the fire department, which is under DeKalb County's auspices, is that the building code plan review would occur here. We typically finish 95% of the, of those within two weeks, 10, 10 days to two weeks. After the completion of that, the plans are then sent to DeKalb County for the life safety code review. So it's a consecutive process, not a concurrent process. And then, the fire marshal's office then reviews those, provides red lines, and eventually issues a permit once the code issues are handled. Right now, the fire marshal's... Right now, the fire marshal's running between a seven- to eight-week backlog on plan review. So what's happening is, is this company's come in either for a remodel of existing office space or new construction. Although we're able to finish the review very quickly, there's an extended period of time that goes along with that. We've met in the past couple of weeks with the fire department, with the building folks, with the county, and they've talked with us about their process. They're involved in a multi-year review and improvement of their process. So I would say a positive basis, I think the fire chief has done some great things over the past couple of weeks to try to improve the process. But they're not gonna be able to be as efficient as we are of being able to house both those functions within the same office and do a concurrent review. The city to accomplish this would be contracting with Clark Patterson Lee, who handles our building services now. And they would hire a certified licensed inspector that would be able to run through this process concurrently. Again, that person would only be handling Dunwoody issues and not have county-wide responsibility. The other point I'll make to council is that under the law, cities our size are allowed to offer fire marshal services, and those include three different services. One is plan review, like I've been talking about, inspection related to the plan review. So as they go to build the structure they've been approved, the fire marshal would inspect the properties during that process. And then the third would be arson investigation. So what we're recommending is only to take over the plan review, I'm sorry, there's one other function, the annual inspections of commercial properties, including schools. And so what we're suggesting is just to take over the plan review and inspection of properties for development, not for annual inspections. If the applicant still chooses, they can still use DeKalb County for that service or use our services, and we'll make the applicant aware of that. So we wouldn't be taking anything away from the county. We'd be offering an augmented or additional service in-house that we think will speed up the process. So I think this is an economic development win for the city. I think it's also positive for the county in that taking the Dunwoody applications off of their plate will speed up the reviews countywide for other projects, which is great for DeKalb County. And I believe that's all I have from a presentation standpoint. I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
I thought of one that I didn't get to ask, that I didn't ask, it's at 6:00, which is what, I've had phone calls from constituents in my neighborhood who happen to be business owners, and when they've had a dispute in the past with the DeKalb Fire Marshal, I think that our community development folks have helped to try to not necessarily eradicate, make the problem go away, but have helped find a solution. What happens now if we bring it internal, does that present a conflict for us as a council or as a city? Just curious.
I think, are you, I just wanna get some clarity, are you referring to situations from the business owners where they have an existing violation and the fire marshal's enforcing the life safety code?
So say they've renovated, and they can't get their COO, because, I can give a specific example, the fire marshal doesn't, the kind of material and the shades they put up isn't permitted in the type of entity that it is. But there's some disagreement about definitions or functionality. And so it just occurred to me, I still think this is a good idea.
It wouldn't be a conflict at all, because as I understand what the example is, is that would be something that our folks would take care of through the process, because they would be doing the plan review and inspection.
Okay.
For life safety issues, so they would be interpreting it.
So when a business owner has a disagreement with the fire marshal over something, do our community development folks usually stay out of it?
You know, anytime we've got a problem with one of our businesses or citizens, our staff attempts to.
Right.
Serve as a bridge builder to be able to come to solutions on problems. So I don't think there's anything that's off limits that we're not allowed to play with. So we're always trying to help find a solution to problems.
Right, so what I'm surmise, what I think I'm taking from your conversation is, is that the example I used was real. A restaurant redid their porch, and they put up some kind of shade or awning. And the fire marshal came in and said no, even though apparently maybe there had, it said no. And under this, it might not get to that point, because they would catch it in the planning?
I think, you know, it's a good question that you're asking, but it's a little perspective. And I could see two scenarios. One is where, you know, we provide the plan review, and then we handle the inspections. It would never go to the DeKalb Fire Marshal. But I could see that you may have a situation where someone goes, and this would be very rare, and somebody gets on the list and goes to DeKalb as opposed to using our plan review services concurrently. They come up with a, you know.
Efficiency.
Determination on it, and they don't like that determination until they get a chance to take a second bite at the apple by coming back to us and saying, you know, sort of dad said no, what does grandpa say?
Right.
Kind of scenario. I don't know that I've thought that through, how that would work. My guess is that we would probably defer to the folks that did the initial plan review, but it would just depend on the situation.
And the standards are gonna be the same?
Standards are the same, same code, same fees that would be associated with the permits.
So if an example, so if a restaurant's not allowed to use a certain kind of fabric on its chairs, and I don't, I know that in the schools, the fire marshal is this picky. I don't know how they are in the commercial world, although actually, I do from some of the conversations I've had. We will have the same standards?
Yeah, and I think the way to look at it is just like building officials.
Okay.
It's the same building code in each city.
Right.
Sometimes they take a slightly different interpretation of it, and, you know, that's sort of how life works. So, yeah, you could have different interpretations, but they're working off of the same book.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to something you just mentioned about somebody that goes to DeKalb first, gets one determination, then maybe they don't like it, and then they come to us. In between that, they go to DeKalb first, but now they're part of this backlog, and then they come to us. Would we then assess, because they're gonna have a fee assessed by the cab, even though the service hasn't been fully completed? And then they come to us, are we also then going to assess a fee because we're being asked to engage?
I mean, my gut instinct on that one, off the top of my head, is probably gonna issue the fee in that scenario, because we're the ones that are gonna be responsible for all the work associated with the plan review and the inspections associated with it. So, and again, the charges on fire marshal is nothing like building fees. So I don't think that would be prohibited for a business, and certainly to be able to have it done much faster would probably be important. They would be happy to pay the fee in that scenario to get better service.
Right, and that's the resolution we have tonight is actually to adopt the fees.
Right, and let me also state for the record, I did it at 6:00 and I left it off at 7:00, but just to, for the council and citizens' benefit, the arrangement that we have is Clark Patterson Lee, who's our vendor for community development, would provide this service. And what we agreed to is that they would accept just the fee that's being paid by the fire marshal, to the city for these services. So it wouldn't cost the city anything, and it wouldn't cost citizens any more than it does now. And then we revisit the issue in about six months and see, make sure that it's equitable. In other words, that the fees that Clark Patterson Lee has been able to collect, does that pay for the service that they're providing? And make sure it's just equitable, both to the city and to the company. And we'll bring back, the expectation is we'll bring back a contract amendment in the next six to nine months, once we have a real feel for how this works.
And do we have the ability, I think we do, to waive fees for like city-sponsored events? And specifically, I'm thinking about the July 4th parade permit. That not only took a long time, but we were subject to the fees for that. Would we be able to do that since that parade belongs to our community?
There may not be a short answer, I'll note that.
So our special event ordinance, as it exists today, allows the city manager in his discretion to waive certain fees. That said, it specifically calls out fees that can be waived for 501(c)(3) organizations. The challenge with the July 4th parade, my understanding is DOJ is a 501(c)(6). So, that said, there are several amendments we may wanna consider in the future to our special event ordinance, and that may be one that we could address when we look at those changes. However, we're trying to fit that in, that discussion with when we were having a low agenda cycle. You guys have been very busy recently. So, yes, there is a discretionary ability for the city manager to waive certain fees. Yes, we could look at that as part of a, some other housekeeping tweaks we need to make to that ordinance.
Great, well, hopefully we'll be able to do that in due course.
Yeah, I suspect we'll be able to do that in the coming months.
I think it's an excellent step forward and for equality Dunwoody. It gives us local control of the timeline that we need for good economic development. In addition to being business-friendly, it's also a more efficient process. Unfortunately, the seven-to-eight week backlog that we find ourselves with the county, that's just unfortunate, and it's very inefficient in this area. The county is good at some things, but in this particular area, unfortunately, it's very inefficient, and we deserve to fix this, and this does fix this for our citizens. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nice solution, Warren, I just wanna say publicly, as I did at 6:00, I've been an advocate for the fire marshal, and I think the services that we're about to provide, the citizens of Dunwoody, the businesses of Dunwoody, is a good thing. So thank you for coming forward with this interim solution until we go for a final fire marshal someday, maybe if so needed.
Let me just add that I visit a lot of the new companies that are moving into Dunwoody on a regular basis with our community development people and our economic development people. And I can tell you firsthand that this is the single biggest pushback we get, is that we get through the Dunwoody system very quickly, and then they get lost in the black hole of DeKalb. And the six-to-eight week is, I think, a little generous. So I think it's a great move forward, and the fact it's not costing us anything is such a no-brainer, it's frightening. So with that, let's have a motion.
Move. Go ahead.
Go ahead, you haven't done anything on that, go ahead.
Appreciate that. I move, does Sharon need to read it or should I read it? Okay, I move that we pass the resolution to establish fees for safety review and inspection.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Sounded unanimous to me, although Terry didn't say anything. All right, that's the end of that part of it. Let's move on to public comment. Again, this is where we allow three minutes for anybody to make a comment to the city. And it's a, as I always say, it's a one-way conversation, not a two-way conversation. So the cards are in back, you haven't grabbed one yet. Right now, I've got one, and we'll go with Hayward Westcott. Your name and address in three minutes, Mr. Westcott.
My name's Hayward Westcott, and I am running for council as well for District 2. I just wanted to point out to everybody in the room and the media that it found it interesting that all three new candidates could not stay for the entire meeting, which was one of the shortest meetings of the year. Thank you.
And it looks like we're gonna keep it short. Anybody else wanna talk? Okay, go in, go in. All right, mayor and council comment, again, we'll start at your end, John.
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right, good, Doug's not here, so John, would you do the honor?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.